Right now of item number forty. And then we'll come back and pick the other consent items. Someone want to make a motion on item number forty? Councilmember Kassar?
Mayor, I'll move item forty with the amendments that I posted to the message board after or during work session.
Also comes councilmember Kassar moves item number forty with the amendment that he posted. Is there a second to that? Councilmember Renteria seconds it. I'm sorry, council mayor Pro Tem seconds that. Any discussion? Councilmember Tovo.
Mayor, I wanted to, we had a conversation about this on Tuesday and I want to add some general direction that I think is in, is in line with that conversation and then and open it up for thoughts from my colleagues. The general direction would acknowledge that the council is, especially with the amendments from councilmember Kassar, making some general, I would say, minimum requirements as I, and that brings me to a question I have for councilmember Kassar that I'll get to it in a minute. But the language that I'm, that I would like to support as general direction would go something like excluding the rental assistance, financial and other direct support and childcare service provider categories. The city manager is directed to reduce or reallocate proposed funding within the COVID spending frameworks categories to meet critical needs and priorities as they emerge, such as anticipated investments relating to food assistance. I'm open to other wording, but, but my point is really the one that I think we got to in our conversation on Tuesday, that in some of the will, will shift and will need to shift. And then I have two specific questions I want to ask with regard to technical assistance and rental assistance. So I opened that up for my colleagues' thoughts on whether that is general direction they can support or whether they have embellishments to make.
Could you read it one more time, please?
Excluding rental assistance, financial and other direct support and childcare service provider categories, the city manager is directed to reduce or reallocate proposed funding within the COVID spending frameworks categories to meet critical needs and priorities as they emerge, such as anticipated investments related to food assistance. And, and maybe instead of reduce or reallocate, we could say adjust if that's, if that's better. What I really wanted to signal, and if we need to do it in a less formal way, that's fine. I want to signal to the manager that we understand some of these categories are going to need to shift as we get better understanding of what the, the true need and our true capacity to meet it is in different areas. And again, one area I see that immediately relevant in is food assistance. Another area is, is definitely in small business and I hope that we can continue to look at some of those categories, including one I'm going to talk about here in a minute, as ways of, of seeing if we can open up some more opportunity to support the small businesses in our city that are going to continue to keep people employed.
Mayor, I don't know if you can see us, I've got my hand up.
I can. Do you have it written down somewhere, Kathy?
I do. I think I just made some adjustments to it on the fly, so I'll have to work on it. But I guess I would, I would welcome some thoughts from my colleagues before I, before I had them posted or circulate it.
I'm not quick enough to follow it. Mayor Pro Tem, then, then councilmember Poole, and then councilmember Kitchin.
I think I understand the intent. I just, I just wanted to make sure because it could mean that then rise can't be flexible. All the, all the things to accept it couldn't be flexible, which could be, and I know you're, you're not intending this, that then rise couldn't go up. So like, we're taking the flexibility away from, from that, and I know that's not what you intended, but maybe there's a way to. And that's why I think, I, I felt like we had all come to the consensus that we all agree that all these are flexible, but maybe it's just that with the exception of individual assistance cannot go anywhere lower than, that, that's one thing that can't go lower, but flexible. Just my thoughts.
I think that's a really good point. And I, you know, and I would prefer just to provide this as general direction rather than have a specific amendment. But my concern was manager, when I asked you that question on Tuesday, you indicated that it might be, I, I, I took away from our conversation that you might need more specific direction. So if we can get to a general understanding that with regard to those particular called out categories, we don't want to go lower, but that we, but we would like to, we would like to be flexible and nimble. We would like you to be flexible and nimble and be ready to respond to some of those additional needs and potentially be creative within the framework you've provided to better meet some of the needs that we, that are still there. Then I would be comfortable leaving it there. So I guess that's kind of a question for you.
Yeah, no, I think that councilmember, that direction is very helpful and knowing that the entire dais is really encouraging us to continue to think creatively and make sure that we have that flexibility in place. Having these specific conversations is helpful, but I don't think it needs to be an amendment. I think the direction is perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Nothing goes lower. How can it be flexible?
It's just those called out categories, Mayor, that would not go lower. Rental assistance, childcare and direct assistance would not go lower.
That was my understanding too.
Councilmember Poole, I think was next.
Great, thanks. Yes, thank you both for the amendments from councilmember Kassar and the added direction from councilmember Tovo. That addresses the interest I have in retaining the flexibility that I know the city manager is seeking. So I'm good with the amended item and the direction being offered.
Councilmember Kitchin.
I think I need to understand the direction a bit better, and I would suggest some different wording if we're going to do wording. I see all these buckets as minimums within our, within a, I see all these buckets as minimums. With the, with understanding the city manager has the, has the ability to adjust, but just like Mr. Vanino let us know the other day is that he would sort of bring back to us if, if it was appropriate to, to adjust in a large amount, one way or the other. But I am concerned, I'm not sure what you're meaning, councilmember Tovo. I don't want any of these buckets to go lower. I support councilmember Kassar's reallocation. It's important to put more dollars into direct services, but I am not prepared to say that only some of them is a minimum for and not others. So with the understanding that, that minimum means as in a flexible way, so that city manager can come back to us and say, look, you know, we're really seeing we need to add a whole lot more to, to rise, for example, or a whole lot more to something else, and so we, we're recommending this adjustment. I'm fine with the city manager doing that, but I am concerned, I want, I want our, you know, our direction to be that this is in, you know, sort of in general, this, these are the levels that we are expecting at a minimum, unless, you know, the city manager feels like we need to make adjustments and if there are large adjustments, he should come back to us. So with that kind of, if that's what you mean, I'm fine with that.
Well, I mean, if there can't be any adjustments, I mean, there's not, this is the money we have. So if, if nothing in here can get lower, then I don't think that allows for that kind of flexibility without further conversations with council. And so I think maybe that's the answer. We'll just have to, we'll just have to continue to come forward with IFCs that shift money around.
That's not what I said, Kathy, I'm sorry. I can repeat it, but that's not what I said.
Well, I apologize for misunderstanding you, but can you help me understand then what?
Sure.
It sounded like you were saying you would not be comfortable with any of these buckets being reduced from the amounts on the spending framework.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. What I meant to say is, you know, these are, maybe, let me use some different words and that might help. So what I meant to say is we are actually seeing these as the target amounts that we want as a minimum. We understand that there need, there may need to be adjustments. And I'm not concerned about, you know, minor adjustments, but if there are major adjustments. So for example, if the city manager is understanding that there's a whole line item that we just, just are going to have to not do at all because we need to put it more in another bucket, that's something I would want to know about. So I would want the city manager to come back to us. You know, I don't have them in front of me to give an example, but, but I, I think it's, that's, that's what I mean. I'm not saying that you cannot go below on certain items. I'm just saying that I think that that kind of thing needs to go, come back to us if we're talking about, if we're talking about going below in a, in a large way. And I think that we had that conversation the other day and Ed Vanino described to us what that might mean. So city manager, let me ask you if you're, if you, does it make sense what I'm saying to you? Do you understand what I'm intending?
Councilmember, there were those larger swings in certain areas and, and we had to move. The order of magnitude is a little hard because each bucket is different. There would, there would certainly be an update to council and if there was that order of magnitude that would necessitate coming back to council for further direction, I feel like that's, that's what your intention is.
Yeah, okay, well, then we're on the same page. By order of magnitude, I trust your judgment on that. But, you know, the best example I can give you is if there was a, if there was a decision made that, that we were going to take all the dollars out of the, out of small business, for example. That's a big change if we just take it all out, I would expect that to come back to us. We said that about the anchor or clear fund or any of these others. So, but I trust your judgment on what is a, what would be a large change. So, and I'm certainly, certainly think it's appropriate and I know that adjustments will need to be made. I also know that you'll be coming back to us and we'll be having further conversations, you can report, so.
I have a question. One of the groups that we identified that might be slipping through the, the cracks in this, and I would just want to make sure that they aren't with this framework as it's laid out, would be those landlords, mostly small mom and pop, that are not otherwise receiving federal funding or mortgage deferral protection, that are renting some of the most important affordable missing middle housing that we, that we have in the city. I want to make sure that, that within one or more buckets, they're otherwise covered, demonstrating that they're landlords, that are landlords of properties that are, that are low rent, that for whatever reason their tenants are, are choosing not to participate in the, in the rent program. I want to make sure that, that Rosie or others are trying to figure out how, at least with some small portion of that, it's, they figure out how to make that available, either in the rent or in the clear funds or, or somewhere so that we're also meeting that need in the city. Is that covered in some of these otherwise established buckets and our staff just has to figure out how to, to make that also available?
Director Trulove could chime in, that'd be great.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Rosie Trulove, Director of Neighborhood Housing and Community Development. We did meet with the Austin Apartment Association and the Board of Realtors earlier this week and discussed the framework of their need. Based on those discussions, we think that funding out of the CLEAR program is the most appropriate way to meet that need, and that's the CLEAR fund that's managed through Economic Development Department.
Okay. Further discussion on this issue, Kathy?
I have a couple specific questions. Councilmember Kassar, you distributed a new motion sheet today. Does it preserve the same, the same reductions and additions as what you handed out on Tuesday?
Yes, councilmember.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. I have momentarily misplaced it. I wanted to ask about a couple things as, so you've proposed a reduction in 3.5 to the creative sector assistance line, which I, I need to ask staff about. It was, no, I think I've resolved that. But we did have a conversation back and forth a little bit on, on Tuesday and then prior to that about the technical assistance line. And I wondered if, if you could offer some thoughts on why retaining 1 million in technical assistance rather than taking, taking that? I know we had a conversation with EDD staff about, you know, that's, that will help, that will help marshal support for some of the businesses applying for these programs. But I guess I'm still undecided, just knowing that we've heard from AIBA and others about the real tremendous need to keep, keep people employed. Most of, most of the people in Austin are employed by small businesses. I, I really am inclined to ask our staff to, to use, to maybe reallocate funding in their existing, some of their existing technical assistance programs to provide that level of assistance and take that million and put it elsewhere. I'm not sure where elsewhere is at the moment, whether it would go back into small business assistance or creative sector assistance. I would, I'd be inclined to kind of leave that open, but I do see that as the more important assistance right now if we have to make a choice among those categories. But didn't know if you had thought, thought through that and had a rationale for that addition.
Councilmember Tovo, if, if that works for the staff, I'm fine with a million in technical assistance sort of floating between categories. My, my limited understanding was that some of the technical assistance was important for, for successfully executing other categories of funds. And so I didn't know how much I could reduce that before making it difficult to implement the categories. But if all of those things blend together and, or, or if there's some reduction in that, it still allows those funds to be deployed efficiently and equitably. I, that, that's the reason I didn't ask from there because I, I thought that that was potentially foundational to making the other things work. But, but I think the solution you proposed also makes sense to me if it makes sense to the staff.
Thanks for that answer. And then also, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Tovo, Silnovia Holt Rab with Economic Development. We would ask that you give us that flexibility to go between the technical and the small business category.
I'm sorry, Silnovia, you weren't quite loud enough to hear.
Okay, sorry, Mayor Adler. I would ask for that flexibility to be able to pivot between technical assistance and small business so that if we don't use all of the technical assistance, we will put it into the small business category.
Director Holt Rab, how, how much do you think you could reduce technical assistance by and still manage the existing program? I, I guess that would be, you know, one of, well, that would be my interest in seeing us allocate less to technical assistance and more to those other categories. So I would, I guess I would want us to spend the minimal number, the minimal amount possible in technical assistance since we're at this point making, you know, making hard choices among different categories.
Yes, councilmember Tovo, we've done an analysis and we're still in the final negotiation stage with our champions and we believe we can spend half a million dollars and then transfer the other half back to the small business assistant line item.
All right, thank you. That would be a help. Councilmember Kassar, I want to be sure that I'm understanding correctly. I think that your motion removes 1 million in rental assistance. Did it land?
No, that is from the, the commercial, the, the, the brand new $2 million program for commercial tenants. It creates a one new million, $1 million program as opposed to a $2 million.
Okay. So that's not from residential?
Correct.
And then, let's see, I had a last question. Oh, I know. I want to ask our EDD staff if they could verify, I imagine you were present in our earlier conversation about HAM and SIMS and some of the other nonprofit organizations that my office communicated with your office about earlier this week. What, what would be helpful in terms of direction from council today to ask you to take a look at, at ways that we can support, support those agencies through the nonprofit piece with the under, with the point that councilmember Alter raised as a very good one, that, that the amount, the eligible amounts are low enough that it's not going to solve some of the really dire economic circumstances some of our nonprofits are facing. But I would, I think it was the intent and councilmember Alter and others can verify this. It does seem to have been the intent that we allow for nonprofit organizations like HAM to, to compete within that nonprofit pool of funding. And so what would be helpful, manager or Dr. Holt Rab from, from today's conversation, for you to have the flex, feel you have the flexibility to allow those agencies to compete within that pool?
And if I might, I also have some language. Sorry, I have some language written if that's helpful, do.
What do you, what do you have?
So what I have is that, so I believe that based on what we've learned in the limited time we've had since our speakers this morning, that I want to clarify that our intention was to allow any 501(c)(3) that provides direct services to be eligible to apply for the anchor funds. The mere use of the word member or the word foundation in their name or program description should not automatically disqualify an organization. We wanted to disqualify organizations that were foundations in the traditional sense as organizations that primarily exist to provide grants to nonprofits. And we wanted to disqualify membership organizations where members pay to join an organization that primarily provides advocacy on behalf of their members. From my review, the SIMS Foundation and the, and HAM would both be eligible to receive anchor funds under the intention council was trying to convey in the resolution authorizing that program. There may be others as well, so staff should feel free to seek clarity. But merely having used the word member or foundation in a description for the program should not automatically disqualify a 501(c)(3) that provides direct support and services.
Do you have any problem with that language, Silnovia?
Thank you, councilmember Alter. I believe that will solve it. I was hoping Ron Haggett was on the line because I believe we just need to remove the word members at the end of line 134.
I think it's still supposed to be for nonprofits, though. So there may be some other organizations that are in that group that are not HAM and that are not SIMS that may need to be served by other funds. So, you know, we're trying not to have Chamber of Commerce or Moveability or organizations that have a very large advocacy and that are really representing other organizations that are for-profit entities. You know, in the case of HAM, it's individual musicians that are getting health insurance and that is qualitatively different. And there's a whole host of associations that advocate, say at the Capitol, for other organizations that we were, that are nonprofits that we were trying to exclude, but not, not groups that provide the direct services.
Thank you, councilmember Alter. I believe we understand the direction. We do.
And there may be others that are providing important services in our community, but the anchor fund was supposed to be for the nonprofits.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, everybody okay with that direction? Okay. What else? Kathy, was that all you had?
Yeah, for the moment. I, I mean, I think we're still in a quandary about some of the, some of the categories does not having sufficient funding, but I guess we'll just, we'll work on it post this meeting with the understanding that some of those categories are flexible. I, I would hope since the council passed a resolution asking us to explore caregiver meals, for example, that if we are able to make some movement on that, my concern is that it might happen at a period of time where we're not meeting or don't have an opportunity to get it on June 11th for an amendment. So it, it's, hopefully those will fall into the, the category of less significant budget shifts, though it's a fairly significant portion compared to the allocation in the spending framework. So we'll, we'll just have to go from here, I guess.
And just to double back real quick and then we'll go to Allison. A question I asked earlier about making sure that in one of the buckets, we have some relief for, for those tenants through those landlords. And Rose, I think you said you thought of as most appropriately through CLEAR, and it very, very well may be that. But I understand that, that councilmember Kassar is okay with a general statement that says you can look at CLEAR or the rent bucket so long as they, they meet qualifications of serving those low income people. So if there's a way for us to figure out how to do that qualification, I still want to keep that something that we can, we can try to figure out. Councilmember Alter.
I think councilmember Harper Madison had her hand up first, if she'd like to go first.
Councilmember Harper Madison.
Thank you, I appreciate that, councilmember Alter. Thank you for recognizing me, Chair. I have a question about, I'd like to know whether or not it's possible to have expedited competitive bidding process or to include vendor scoring in our emergency procurement process?
Councilmember, I, I think the intention here is really to get these funds out the door as quickly as possible. We are looking at all ways in which we do that and, and creative ways as well. We're working closely with our procurement department and ensuring that we're still abiding by government rules, but really knowing that in this time of emergency, we have additional flexibility as a result. And so the short answer is we are doing everything we can to ensure that we can get these funds out the door quickly. And I think you've seen that already through the work that we have been doing, but appreciate your feedback and we'll, we'll continue to take that into consideration as we look for other ways to get this funding out.
So in my mind, I, I think, I think through sort of some of the transparency issues, I think if I could offer the direction of purchasing include a vendor scoring process for emergency procurement. I think that would be helpful. I don't know if there's anybody other than our city manager who can speak to that on the line?
I don't think we have anyone from that department in specific, but certainly we're going to take that into consideration, councilmember.
Thank you.
I think you said councilmember Alter, but I think you're muted. So I wanted to ask if Ms. Porzenio or Dr. Holt Rab had anything else that they want to share with us, mean the, the areas that are, are being reduced all fall under kind of economic development, economic recovery? And, you know, just it's a significant departure from what staff suggested and, and I agree that we need to put more into direct assistance. But I, I did want to make sure that we took another opportunity to hear from them if there are additional concerns that we may need to be addressing or allowing for flexibility.
Councilmember Gabriel Porzenio, Chief Economic Recovery Officer. Certainly understand and listening closely to the discussion from council and support the, the direction that council is going in. We do have significant needs in our small business community as we are aware. And so we will, we understand the direction and flexibility as we're moving forward and we will certainly keep that in mind. We did build out our recommendations based on the need that we're seeing already with the bridge loan program that we have underway and we know that that need continues to grow. We are continuing to make sure that we're collecting the data needed to make the, those recommendations we can write to you. And we will continue to have that discussion moving forward.
Thank you. Do we know if we don't spend that CBG money on the loans because we don't have enough qualified businesses, if that can be redirected to help businesses in another way?
We have had conversations about that. The simplest process forward would be to The simplest process forward would be to redirect to our existing family business loan program. And there are businesses that are in tiring about that program. So we are aware that all those dollars may not be spent and we are looking for ways that we can do that quickly.
And does that loan fall within the bucket from the 16.5 million or because it's loans, is that not included? Is there an additional? Does this mean there's additional 6.5 or 5.5 above clear? Or is this like, how are we counting for that business loan?
It was already budgeted in our operational budget, so it's not additional.
Okay, but the does the 16.5 million that would remain in the small business assistance bucket, there was 10 million for clear, a million for the the technical piece there, but then there's 5.5 million more. What is that going to?
The 5.5 million more, my understanding was to go to the clear funds. That's different than the bridge. I was looking at the spread, the sheet that we shared with you to make sure I'm not misspeaking, but that's my understanding.
Okay, but the roughly 6 million that we put into the loan program is not accounted for at this at this structure. You know, I think, you know, it's pretty clear this is the direction we're going to go. And I think that there's definitely been demonstrated demand for direct assistance. I do think that, you know, should we get additional funding from the feds or identify additional funding in the budget process, that we should be very focused on the economic recovery piece. This is not necessarily traditional economic recovery approaches. But I but I think we we need to be thinking about making some of those pivots. Should we identify additional funding or should additional funding come down? Because I think that is the piece of the spending framework where it is weakest. And and I think that, you know, as we're thinking about putting together our budget and, you know, we're going to have to not only cut, but also think about whether existing programs are meeting our needs. I'd like us to make sure that we're thinking about sort of, you know, some of the issues that were raised on Tuesday in work session where we're able to make some health investments that have both COVID and non-COVID implications to help folks who are experiencing hypertension and diabetes, et cetera, in ways that also advance our ability to reduce the fallout from COVID, but then also with workforce development or small business support that gets us to be more resilient. This is a crisis like no other where we we have a very large time of this immediate impacts and and I think it's appropriate where we're falling with the money that we have now. But I but I think we do need to begin pivoting as we go into budget and thinking about other investments should Congress come through with additional funding.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak? One one additional issue I wanted to 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 raise. I know that we had talked about moving money into the direct assistance programs. We moved some money out of out of art and music because those folks could otherwise qualify for the general funding, which I agree to. I just want to make sure that we set that up in a way that that makes it so that everybody in the community has that same ability. So if it's a lottery system that happens, I think that that works. If we're giving it to groups to that are that reach into communities of folks that have the the greatest need, then then we need to make sure that we have groups that reach into all the different communities of similar greatest need in our community. So either of those that that make sure that that happens. Anything else on discussion on this item number 40? Okay, those in favor of item number 40, please raise your hand. Those that are opposed. I can't see my screen, but I think it was unanimous. If anybody was not intending, now I have everybody. It's unanimous on the dais. Item number 40 passes. Okay, let's now go to the remaining items that we that we have to address. We have